This will be a study meeting, no votes will be taken tonight. My colleagues here on council, after hearing and learning about the different items brought before us, will offer a variety of motions in regards to future direction of those items. That could be an approving, a denying, or a referral to committee of the whole. Those motions will carry over until our next regular meeting, which will be on August 21st of 2023, at which time those motions that are offered tonight, or some other combination of motions, may be offered and voted on. With that being said, we will start tonight's meeting with audience communication. Oh, excuse me. First, we have to stand up and say the pledge of allegiance. I believe Mr. Morgan is going to lead us in that order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. So we will go to audience communication. That will, while we've set aside 30 minutes, and each member of the audience has up to three minutes to address us on any non-agenda items tonight. Sir, good evening. Tell me your name and address, please.
Thank you, Christopher Martin, and the great state of Michigan. It's unfortunate I had to wait for the beginning of this meeting because I would have liked to have talked about this when DTE representatives are here. A number of years ago, when Jack Kirksey was president, was mayor, he could have been president too, but I guess mayor of the city of Livonia. And there was a lot of DTE outages at the time. And so he scheduled a meeting over at School Craft College, at the Vista Tech Center over there. And I went to that because I took pictures of a tree that was in the, right away at the rear of the yard, six feet on each side is the easement. And the main power lines were inside of the tree. And so I took those pictures with me and showed it to representatives from DTE at the time, which were there because of a lot of power outages. They actually showed on the front page of the Livonia Observer at the time, Sam Carey Magno's house, where the trees had fallen on power lines. And he lives, this is on the east side of his property, that faced Merriman Road. So in going to the meeting, I will tell you this. I showed him the pictures, I couldn't get them to do anything. The guy kept telling me, the representative from DT kept saying, "Well, that's, that's not in the easement." I said, "It most certainly is." "Well, we're not responsible for a wire that goes from the pole to your house." I said, "It's not. It's the main power at the rear of the property for the subdivision." So it ended up being just a dog and pony show. That's the way I would describe that. Nothing was accomplished, okay? Maybe this, that's exactly what it was, okay? It was a waste of my time in trying to convince them, okay? Also, the, the times that I've had Davey tree out with a power outage due to tree limbs, laziest guys on the planet, my opinion, in dealing with them. So it would take a complete overhaul. Maybe the current mayor can get that done, maybe some of you, I really don't know. But I don't hold out much hope. I'd have to see it to believe it. So, and that's based on my 70 years of experience in the city, and numerous power outages where I also, like Laura Toy and others, had to throw everything away that was in the refrigerator, and that's happened many times.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other audience comment?
Yeah, I'll speak again.
Your name and address, please.
And I really don't want to give my address so many times. So can I say Burton, Hallow?
Yeah, so I have to ask you your name and address?
Andrea.
What you choose to tell me is up to you.
Okay. Oh, I don't have to give my physical address. Burton, Hallow.
Okay.
And I guess I just want to say that I'm very confused on Livonia's family-first, public safety, and zoning policies. The manager came up and said I need to go through the process again of giving the $500 and, I guess, wait, so should I not get the fence in? I'm not sure. I've been planning this for months. I have multiple big trees that I purchased in the beginning of the season to get in before the fall.
So I don't-
You know, so it's like frustrating.
I heard what you said before, as did my colleagues up here. The issue that you're speaking about is not an issue that council has authority over. We don't determine whether or not somebody can have fences. We're in charge of creating ordinances. Those ordinances have delegated that power to the zoning board of appeals.
I hear you.
And there is a process there, and a review fee structure and all that kind of stuff as well. And that has to be followed for anybody seeking to do what I believe you explained you want to do.
All I want to do is on the one side of my property where my house and my garden line up to where there's a garage and two people, I want to go to the front of my house because that full side is like western side for good garden.
You got to stay to the podium there.
And there's two, you know, so like, there's no privacy over there. There's like, there are garages right there, people hang out, like, so all I'm asking to do is put, I have permission for the fence, I don't understand why I have to go to the zoning board to make the fence to the front of my house on one side and pay $500.
I trust that the department within City Hall is, is at least apprising you of the situation and the process to do so. That is the process. You have to follow the process. We are not the authority who can grant you the ability to put a fence in as you're describing. That's not a city council function.
Okay, I understand that. But your, your function, you could change this law then, right? So I can bring that here and say, "Hey, we should be able to get privacy fencers, so we can change that law." Where I'm to say, "Oh, what, what's bad going to happen to me if I don't get a fence? What's bad going to happen to me if I don't get a fence? I don't know. Should I have to answer that? Why am I special? I'm not special." I mean, I just don't get it. So I have to go to the zoning board, or what? Or not plan on getting the fence by this fall?
If you don't mind, if you haven't already done so, if you want to sign in at the podium or in the back of the room and leave your phone number, we'll make sure that Sarah from our office-
She just told me I had to go fill out the application and pay 500.
That's the process-
And wait 45 days.
So if you want to get additional information, leave your phone number and I'll have Sarah call you again, and go from there.
What's that?
Nothing. I just said you might want to double check that, that's all.
Well, that's what I just, she said. I don't know.
Okay, we're trying to give you the assistance-
So I'm just trying to say I'm like really upset and really confused with the public safety, family-first zoning thing.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to address us at this time? Yes, sir, your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Jeff Joseph. I reside at 18051 Floral. I'm filling in for my wife. I was on the top list to have the street blocked.
Okay, so we have not called your item yet? This is open communication?
Yeah, I've never done this before.
Oh, that's okay. Have a seat for a moment and we'll get to you as quickly as we can. Thank you, sir. Is there any other audience comments, going once, going twice? I see none. Are there any comments this evening from the council?
No.
I see none. We'll jump right into the scheduled agenda. Item one is a request to barricade City Street from Tony Joseph to be held on Saturday, September 23rd of 2023, from 2:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Floral Street between Curtis and Lather Street. Is Tony Joseph here? Oh, you should have sat closer.
Tony's my wife. I'll fill in for her.
Sounds good. Tell us what this is about, sir.
We're having a baby shower slash wedding show.
Wow.
Our street is very narrow, since we don't have curbs and sidewalks, where we have out-of-town people, a lot of people attending, over 100, and for safety reasons, where that block resides, we felt is for through traffic, be blocked off. That's it, just for through traffic.
So who are you celebrating?
Uh, my daughter is pregnant, six months, and now they're getting married. My wife can be here because she's currently, my daughter's in the hospital of kidney stones. So it's a little rough for a pregnant woman.
Send her and your family our best, and congratulations on the exciting events.
Thank you.
Ms. Toy, do you have a motion?
Could I just ask one?
Whatever you want.
Quick comment. Did, have you talked to your neighbors?
Yes.
I mean, and 11 o'clock's good with them and all that good stuff?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, we have.
Okay. Well, all right. I will make the motion then of approving, sir. Have a great time. Good luck to your daughter and your family.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Is this your first time being a grandpa?
Second.
All right, so you got a little bit of practice on-
My son actually just moved back from Chicago, so I'll be watching my two-year-old grandson starting next week.
Good luck.
Yeah, really good luck.
Is there any audience comments on item one? I see none. We'll put that on consent, sir. You do not have to come back. This is all but assured to pass at the regular, okay?
Thank you.
Take care, good luck. Item two is a block party from Stephanie Esther Riker, to be held on Sunday, October 22nd, from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Breton Drive between Norwich and Pollyanna Streets. Good evening, your name and address?
Good evening, I am Stephanie Esther Riker.
Okay, what's this about?
Um, so it's our 11th year, I live in Windridge Village, and we host a Halloween parade slash party for the subdivision. It's grown over the years. Last year, we were successful, the barricades were helpful. Um, we had over 150 folks, and our property, they kind of spill over into the streets, so for safety reasons, it's best. Um, and it worked nicely last year.
Awesome. Do I have any motions from the council? Mr. Morgan?
I would like to offer an approving for consent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, we really appreciate people taking on these things to make this a great community, so thank you very-
It's a great sub. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, is there any audience comment on two? I see none. This will be on consent. You do not have to come back. Good luck. Item three is a request for authorization to purchase energy warning upfitting package. This is from the Livonia Fire and Rescue. For the new shift commander response vehicle from budgeted funds, citing CR-58-23. Chief Genison, explain this to us, please.
Good evening, President Jolly, council members, thanks for having me. A few months ago, the fire department took delivery of our new command vehicle, which you approved earlier in the budget cycle, was a new F-250 to replace our current command vehicle that the battalion chief uses on a daily basis for emergency response. We now need to upfit that vehicle with the emergency response package, lights, sirens, arrowboards, to protect the vehicle, its occupants, and our citizens. The emergency package was put out for quotes to three vendors. Priority One Emergency Response in Canton came back with the lowest quote, which met the required specifications. The department is requesting an approving resolution to go ahead with the purchase from Priority One Emergency.
Mr. McCullough?
I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent.
Thank you. Is there any audience comment on item three? I see none. This item's on consent. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, President.
Always good to see you. Item four is an award, well, I should say it's, there are some circumstances I wouldn't want to see you, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Item four is an award of bid from the Department of Public Works for the professional architecture services of the Civic Center Library chiller replacement design from budgeted funds. Mr. Rushlow, good evening. Explain this, please.
Good evening, Council Jacob Rushlow, the Assistant Director of Public Works. As you're aware, the existing cooling system in the library was failing. Two out of three of those condensers had failed, and we currently have a temporary cooling system in place that was installed just last month to provide cool air to that building. This proposed project scope includes the removal of the, the existing cooling unit, pumps, and water tower, and replacement with a new air-cooled unit that will be mounted on the ground on the east side of the building, new water pump, chilled water pumps in the lower level of the building, and all their pertinences. The scope development services for this project were assigned to OHM advisors, and they have estimated the project work to be about $1.1 million in total. In order to proceed with the design and bidding of that project, we prepared an RFP, as is customary for these types of projects, sent out to our four as-needed architecture firms per the QBS process, and Detroit Architectural Group, DAG, was the lowest bidder. So it's our recommendation by the department that council proceed to award these professional architecture services to the Detroit Architectural Group through the QBS process for the design bid phase and construction contract administration phase for the Civic Center Library chiller replacement in an amount not to exceed $60,800 from budgeted funds. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Ms. McIntyre?
Thank you, Jacob, and thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is, this is only for the architectural work?
Correct.
Not the actual chillers?
Correct.
The, how long, the chillers that are there now, Jacob, how long have they been there?
They're original to the building.
So 30?
Close to 40 years, yeah.
Forty. Time flies. And, and do we expect that the new chillers will have a similar lifespan, or has the technology, as it has with a lot of things, changed with restrictions on freon and everything else that will make it likely that these new chillers will not have the same kind of lifespan?
Yeah, so through this process with the design and, and not to avoid the question, but I, I don't have that exact answer, but I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say why real quick is, is, this is the next step to do that design.
Got it.
To figure out what type of unit we'll put in. There is actually, through that project scoping phase with kind of the preliminary work, OHM worked through two or three different options that could be viable for this air-cooled type unit. Through the detailed design, will, you know, determine which one of those will go through forward with for the construction.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, Mr. Rushlow, for being here tonight. In your presentation, did I understand that correct, that OHM projects that this new AC unit will cost $1.1 million?
Yes, that's correct.
So if I understand that correctly, we spent roughly $200,000 on a temporary air-conditioning unit, and that temporarily provides air conditioning to the entire building. Another $60,000 for design services to design the new AC unit for the library. And OHM, which we pay money to, to provide the expertise that they do, they project that it's going to be another $1.1 million for an air-conditioning unit. And the point I bring that all up is, we're looking at, I don't know, $1.3, $1.4 million for an air-conditioning unit. So as we as a city continue to talk about what the future of our libraries are in this community, I think it's very fair to say that rehabbing any old library is going to cost a lot of money. We're talking about spending $1.3 million on just an air-conditioning unit to provide residents and our customers, just the basic necessity of air conditioning in today's, when you're at the library. So I really appreciate the work that you and your department are doing. I know the libraries and the future of our buildings in this community are really important topic, and the city council and administrations are spending a lot of time, but I, I just want to put that out there to the residents, that we're looking at $1.3-ish million dollars just for an AC unit. That doesn't take in consideration of boiler units, you know, cosmetic repairs, structural repairs, windows, doors, roofs. I think we just spent 200-some thousand plus dollars on a roof for another library, so I, I think we just have to have really honest, frank discussions here when we talk about the vast amount of money that some of these rehabs are going to cost. Again, $1.3 or so million dollars just for an air-conditioning unit. So thanks, appreciate your work.
You're welcome.
We don't have a motion yet. I just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna point this out because I think this kind of makes sense. You use the word a pertinence, right? That's a word we don't hear very often, but this project sure seems to have a whole lot of them. There's a whole lot of pieces to this one singular issue.
It's true.
And it's, it's, it becomes, it's slowly unraveling itself to see how much of a process and what this all includes.
Yep, absolutely.
So I like that you use that word.
Thank you.
Ms. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. Um, yeah, this is, anytime you do a full design of a chiller, this is the process. And, you know, I know you've taken some proactive steps, especially with the needs assessment, and starting to kind of try to get your arms around some kind of a capital programming for a long term, and I know you're in the process of doing so. It is, it, it's a tough thing, you know, we're sitting here, obviously, waiting on an air handler. Um, you had a pandemic, and obviously that did stuff with inflation and materials. So yeah, while it is terrible, you know, at least right now, we've got the library cooled. This gets to the design. Hopefully, we get the design back pretty quick, and you can get on Mitten and get the, get this chiller ordered. It isn't the greatest, but knowing that this is going to be a long-term solution, I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent if there's no objections.
Any audience comments on item number four? I see none. That's on consent. Thank you, sir. But you're not done yet. Item five is an award of bid from Public Works for the professional architecture services for the 2023 generator replacement project for fire stations three, four, and six, and the DPW building maintenance facility from budgeted funds. Mr. Rushlow?
Yes, thank you again. Exactly as you stated, this is a replacement of existing generators at the three fire stations that were listed, as well as the building maintenance facility at the DPW. The proposed project scope includes the removal of those units and replacements with new units capable of supplying emergency power to the entire building. Currently, a couple of those stations, they have generators that provide some power, but not full operational power. So we're looking to improve that with this project. So in order to proceed with the design and bidding of this, we went through the same process of putting together RFP, sending that out to our four as-needed architects in accordance with the QBS process, and DLZ Michigan was the lowest bidder on this one. It's our recommendation that, by the department, that council proceed to award professional architectural services to DLZ through the QBS process for design bid phase and construction contract administration phase for the generator replacements in an amount not to exceed $64,000 from budgeted funds.
Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I'm sorry, did you say $64,000?
$64,000 for the design services, yes.
Okay. No, I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. Again, this is another more proactive item. I will say that my recommendation is see how much the natural gas version is. Working with diesel and the trucks, that has been a nightmare. So natural gas is always hopefully consistent. I will say that lead times are still extreme. We just went out for bid on one, and the transfer switches are still at 52 weeks. So hopefully, you know, maybe even hold pricing and stuff like that. But this is another good step to, to creating security in our facilities, and I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent.
Any audience comments on five? I see none. Five will be on consent. Item six is a request for additional appropriation from the Department of Public Works for the unexpected trimming and removal of trees resulting from winter storms in 2022, '23 from the forestry fund. Mr. Rushlow? Mr. Moore, I should look up.
It's fine. Doug Moore, Department of Public Works. Council, back on November 4th of 2020, you approved the resolution 299-20 with Saad Solutions, our tree chem vendor. It was for $350,000 a year. We unfortunately are going to run out of that money in about three weeks and are asking for another $100,000 this year, so that we can get through the end of the year, basically for the excessive amount of storm damage that we've had from the February, March storms and the one that we had two weeks ago.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Toy?
I'd like to offer an approving on consent.
Any public comments on item six? Yes, sir, Mr. Martin, tell me your name, please.
Christopher Martin.
Two minutes.
State of Michigan. These trees, are they between the sidewalk and the street through you?
Mr. Moore, are these-
Where are these trees?
Are these funds to be used to cut city trees?
Right away trees.
Okay, perfect. Here's why I'm bringing this up, is when these guys cut these trees down, and this is very common, regular guys that remove trees and trim them, they'll put down sheets of, old sheets of plywood over the sidewalks, over people's driveways. The contractor that we have doing this type of work doesn't do that. So what happens is when a big piece that they cut will fall on the sidewalk and cracks it, this is, this is what goes on. They'll be replacing that sidewalk and be charged for that, okay? Crack this in the sidewalk now, and that was brought about by the pure laziness of the tree trimming company that we hire out. And my tax dollar, yours, and the people out in TV land that are watching this actually pay for it. And so that has never been addressed, it's very common. So if you could put something in this that goes with the consent that you're going to approve this thing, that they do something about putting things down, okay, to protect the sidewalk from being cracked up.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moore, please make note of that. Yes, thank you, sir. Ms. McIntyre?
Doug, and maybe this goes actually, I'm not sure if it goes to you or through the chair to Todd. If there's a situation, we're aware of situations where a tree falls and cracks the sidewalk, right?
That's correct. If there's a tree, obviously, there's residents that identify issues, accidents do happen. The contractor will be responsible for placing that sidewalk flag, not the taxpayer.
And, and how many?
Very few that I'm aware of. On a sidewalk program, we maybe get three or four flags that, that are crack. And again, it may, maybe an area that's already damaged due to the tree hump, or the hump in the sidewalk itself, but as far as I've been here, fif, almost 15 years, I've had very few cases. But again, there's an accident that do happen. Again, we try to take the trees out prior to road construction because again, we don't want to come back after the fact.
Right.
But ideally, we do the best we can, but accidents do happen, and again, we want to make sure pedestrians are, are made safe when the sidewalk is fixed. We, we're going around spending lots of money to fix the ramps, fix the sidewalks, and make it safe for pedestrians. Thank you.
In eight years, I, I recall, we, we've had a handful where something has gone very wrong with the city tree trimming and an accident. I just, I, I recall very, very few of those. Thank you.
Do we have a motion from the council?
I'd like to.
Go ahead.
I'd like to offer approval for the additional tree trimming expense to be placed on the- Pardon me? Oh.
Oh, did you, I'm sorry. Ms. Toy already did that, that's my bad. All right, so we have an approving on consent.
Thank you.
Any audience comments? Would you like to comment on this?
So my comment on that was-
Your name, please.
Andrea Burton Hallow. Um, I, we have a tree in the front of the house, well, we had three dead pines in the back, which I called DTE, called the city, because it was very alarming that it was right by the, the line. We've had two fires in the storms. I mean, I, thank God I deleted, or I got the dead pines gone, but the city said they couldn't help me at the times when I couldn't afford it, and DTE said it's not their problem, called the city. I'm like, this is dangerous. You know, it's very close to the lines. And then this year, I had the money, I got the trees done because I knew I was getting the fence in, and, um, but then it goes back to the, that, the tree in the front of the house, which I don't get, is, a few years ago, somebody came out and pruned it, and I went out and talked to them, and they pruned it completely lopsided, unbalanced, and spent hours doing it. And I went out and talked to them, he said, "Oh, I'm an arborist." And then the next year, I got a letter saying the, the city wants to cut down the tree, perfectly healthy, beautiful tree. And I kind of got in a little frenzy about it, and like, what, why are you going to cut down this perfectly healthy tree when I have a dead one right by the thing that you want in the backyard? So I guess that's my only thing, is maybe coming up with things that if there's dead trees in the backyard by lines, that the city can be responsible for cutting those and leave the healthy trees on the sidewalk that are interfering with them alone. I guess that's all my comment would be.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I did have to be responsible for my neighbor's tree that fell on the, on the line this season with the storms, fell on the line, caused a fire at the electric box at my house, and I was responsible for replacing the electrical box at my house this season also. That was another $1,200 I spent this year. So those are all, only my, my comments on the trees, maybe leave the good ones alone and trim them so they're balanced. And maybe under the lines. Did you guys see how they trim them like that?
Thank you, ma'am.
It's weird. Okay, thanks.
Appreciate it. So we do have an approving, we've heard from the audience. This will be on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item seven is a request to authorize the purchase of 50 cases of Nadilar XRT tablets from the Department of Public Works for the 2023 mosquito treatment program from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore?
It's actually 2024, it'll be next year. It's the cigar-shaped briquettes that we drop in the storm sewers every year. This is next year's purchase, to get them in, take advantage of this year's prices.
And, and this is for the maintenance and prevention of excessive amounts of mosquitoes, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Mr. Martin, your name, please?
Christopher Martin. A little disappointed in the previous one, but I can't go back in time because my, my two minutes was burned up on that one. But to get to the one we're talking, discussing right now about the mosquitoes, yes, there's two guys in a fancy truck that the city owns that we paid for, taxpayers. They go around, the passenger guy throws a tablet in the sewer, puts a little spray can mark there, okay? But here's the biggest thing, we do that for mosquitoes that are in the, in the sewer, in the drain for the streets. But yet at the same time, throughout the city, there's retention ponds for parking lots and whatever that are green. If there was a fountain in there to move the water around, a pump, it has long since been non-working. Those ponds attract the Canadian geese that are walking across major highways, okay? And they act like they own the highway. But it's just very unusual. I understand the developer wanting to put a hole in the ground to hold water, rather than tanks underneath because it's the, it's the least investment, okay? But that standing water, this, that is green, is a bigger attraction for the mosquitoes than throwing tablets in our sewer, I believe, okay? And they're all over the city, and they're not maintained whatsoever, okay? But now, some of you might argue against that, that's fine. I'm not going to have a chance to have a discussion with you, because once I leave this podium, you can say anything you want to up there, whether it's correct or not, okay? So what I'm telling you right now, and what I stated on the previous one, was absolutely correct. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Donavick?
Thanks, Mr. Moore, for being here. My understanding is retention ponds are privately owned or operated by associations, and the city doesn't have jurisdiction to do anything there?
Correct, it's private property.
Great. And the sewers, from my understanding, are not private property, they're owned by the city. With that being said, I'd like to offer an approving on consent, there's no objection from my colleagues.
We have an approving on consent from Donavick for seven. We will move on to item number eight, that is a request to enter into lease agreement with Charge EV LLC from the Department of Public Works to provide electric vehicle charging stations for the city of Livonia. Mr. Rushlow, tell us all about this.
Good evening, once again. Charge EV, the company here is working through the General Motors Dealer Community Charging Program to expand charging access at no cost to communities. Basically, the GM dealers are underwriting the cost for this program. Through this public-private partnership, Charge EV would be completely responsible for the cost, installation, maintenance, and the operation of this equipment, as well as the electrical service that provides the charging units with power. They would collect whatever the customary charging rate is set by the company for customers to use those charging stations. The city in return would agree to allow Charge EV to use and access the certain areas designated on selected city properties, and the city would receive a small revenue share of the charging fees. These chargers are a Level 2 charging station, proposed to be installed at a few different locations, two stations at the rec center, and each, each charging station, a pedestal has two charging units on it. So there, there's two stations or four chargers at the rec center, two at the library, and then two also in the parking area somewhere between Fox Creek and Bicentennial, which should get some pretty good use there, too. The exact locations of those and what parking spaces they would be in on the premises would be determined through the design process that we work through with input from the city and Charge EV. So with that, it's respectfully requested that the city council authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with Charge EV LLC to provide these electric vehicle charging stations in accordance with the terms of the agreements. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McIntyre, then Ms. Toy.
Thank you, Jacob. Will we charge the folks who are using these, or these will be for city vehicles?
This is for public use, and the Charge EV company would collect that fee that is paid by the user.
Okay, that's, that was my understanding. I'm very, very happy to see us moving ahead with portable charging stations rather than fixed. They can be deployed, redeployed if needed, is that correct?
No, these are, these are permanent fixed stations at these three locations.
Then I, I was misreading this. Why, why would we not be moving ahead then? I'm sorry, why would, why are we going with fixed instead of portable charging units?
I don't, I'm not aware of a portable charging unit available to us for this type of a charging, ju- just because electrical power that's needed to come underground to those units, with the high voltage there that's involved. I'm, I'm aware of only a fixed-type charging unit for, for these applications.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Toy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, if I may, to Mr. Rushlow. Mr. Rushlow, do we get any kind of percentage from that money that we're collecting?
We do, yeah, so it's, so the charges are per kilowatt hour, similar to what your electric bill is from DTE. So the company, Charge EV, when you swipe a credit card to pay to charge your car, we get three cents per kilowatt hour, comes back to the city at a revenue share.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I know that Mr. Beringhaus had texted me today because he serves on the Greenleaf Commission, I see him in the audience. I'd like to ask him to come up to the microphone, because I know they studied this issue very intensely, and if you could just give us briefly, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair, I know they sponsored that Drive Electric Livonia at School Craft College about a year ago, which was fascinating. I know that Rob was their councilman, and just wondered if Jim could enlighten us on that a little bit.
Oh, I'll try my best. Oh, you mean that Jim?
That Jim, yeah.
Mr. Beringhaus, tell us your name, and you're currently the chair of the Greenleaf Commission, correct?
Correct, yes.
What do you, what do you know about this?
Sure. I'll start with the basics here, Jim Beringhaus, 37195 Waymouth, Livonia. Yes, about a year ago, Mayor Brosnan asked the Greenleaf Commission to assist with the creation on recommendations for an EV infrastructure within the city. Working with the DPW department, we studied a number of different communities, and also interviewed a number of different companies as well. The arrangement that Mr. Rushlow is outlining to you this evening is a very common business model for communities to adopt, where the EV charging provider provides the equipment as well as the systems to not only monitor the vehicle charges, but also to arrange for any kind of billings on those charges as well. So, everybody thinks an EV charger is just a unit, a fixed unit in the ground, but it's a combination of fixed costs, or capital costs, which is the acquisition of the charging units themselves, and then there's a lot of soft costs involved, billing, electric vehicle monitoring, items like that. From what I'm seeing, reading this proposal this evening, it's a very good arrangement for the city, it's a very common arrangement that other communities around us use, and not only that, the fact that the city is looking at emerging new transportation technologies for the community, that ties very nicely to the Livonia Vision 21 Master Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Beringhaus.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. McCullough, and then Mr. Donavick. Do you have question, do either of you have questions for Mr. Beringhaus?
No, I have questions for Sean.
You have a seat, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Council President. We don't have a motion, do we?
We do not currently have a motion.
Okay. No, I, I wanted to just take a quick minute to applaud this, I mean, I, heavy, I know it's only, you know, six units to start with, and to kind of answer, I'm fairly familiar with some of these programs, and the revenue share, in theory, because one question that everybody might want to know is, who's paying for the electricity to charge these? And that revenue share usually factors into a net zero and an amenity that would come to the community. That's usually with that 3%, or the three cents per kilowatt. Having this is a step in the right direction, and, and again, I applaud everybody that's involved, Greenleaf. And Jim, you know this, that this is going to get us extra points for the Green Communities Challenge, and maybe bump us up, so I know that's more of, you know, the, the marketing component, but it, it's something big that's coming up, as everybody kind of tailors towards that. So I know there's no motion, I'll up there an approving on consent if there are no objections. Thank you.
Mr. Donavick?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thank you to Mr. Beringhaus from our Greenleaf Commission for being here tonight and shedding some light, I appreciate the work your commission does. Ms. Rushlow, I was reading through the lease agreements, and I have a number of questions. First of which is, why is there two lease agreements? Trying to wrap my head around that, there's one for the rec center specifically, and there's one for the other buildings highlighted.
That is a really good question, and I'll actually turn to my colleague here on my left, Mr. Paul Bernier from the Law Department, to answer that.
It goes to the actual ownership of the rec center, because the rec center was set up by a commission, I guess for lack of a better word. It's legally a different entity than the other properties.
Great, awesome. And then, thank you, Mr. Bernier, the smartest man in the room. Mr. Rushlow, I think Council President Jolly took offense to that maybe, as he's an attorney as well. But with that being said, Mr. Rushlow-
Open to respect, Paul.
I, I do think it's a great idea, I mean, I love the fact that we don't, we, the city, aren't bearing the cost right now, but as you look at the 10-year lease agreement, my concerns is what happens after year 10? I know it talks about extension of five years, and, but it, it kind of says, you know, both parties have to mutually agree. Is there, is there a potential, or is it the norm? And maybe it's too early to tell if, what the norm is, but is it the norm that after that 10-year period, that the city or the host will be responsible for utility costs, maintenance costs, et cetera?
Yeah, as far as I, I know in going through the process of reviewing the agreements, there's no, there's no possibility for the city to take ownership of that equipment at the end of the lease term. As far as I know, what they've been doing since this is a new program, no one's gotten to the end of that tenure yet, obviously, to, to see how that kind of shakes out. I'm sure through the process, too, I mean, 10 years for technology is a really long time, right? We're seeing how fast EVs are moving right now. I'm sure there's going to be new equipment that comes up for technology and new types of charging units. The dealers are already talking about switching to something different to kind of get around one type of charger, so there's going to be changes, equipment upgrades, I would assume, over that, over that 10-year period, for sure.
Sure, sure. And then we talk about the early termination portion of the contract, it says that the average is less than 50 kilowatts an hour per month they can remove the EV charging stations. Is there any data that shows that when they, when they decided to partner with Livonia, they show that Livonia's prime location, that these charging stations will exceed that 50 kilowatt per hour? Or they just kind of test run, and then, I think it's after 16 months, they're going to rip them out of the ground? I mean, are we scared that we're not going to meet that threshold, or is there data supporting that we'll be all right?
You know, we're, we're not too worried about it, and there is a representative here from, from Charge EV, if there's any specific questions, he may be able to answer it in that regard, but I would be surprised if after the first 16 months or a short period of time, after investing all that upfront capital to run the electric lines, put in the meters, get that set up with DTE, that they would yank those out right away. But if they're there and no one's using them, it's also a business issue on their end to not continue to maintain that and pay a utility bill to DTE for something that's not being used.
And last question is, and I just want clarification, reading the packet, we are not paying for the utility of the service, right? We're not paying the electrical bill, regardless of that 3% per kilowatt that we get. That's just, that's just revenue sharing, we just get that for ourselves, whereas in the service, they're paying the electricity bill.
That is correct.
Great, awesome. Thanks, Mr. Rushlow.
Sir, come on up. Tell me your name and your affiliation with this project, please.
My name is Greg Sernkovich, I, I work for Charge EV. So my affiliation is, I kind of run the program, and come to the city council meetings and talk to some fine people like yourselves, and just answer some questions in my, my free time after work, so. I'd like to thank Mr. Rushlow for doing a better job than I probably would have, so if you're ever looking for a job in the future, let me know. But other than that, I'm just, just here to answer any questions if you guys have anything.
I don't think there's any questions for you at this time, but we appreciate you being here, it's always an added value when people who have the items before us come before us. So thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. I do have something, Paul. This, it's not directly related to this agenda item, but I noticed that we do have other EV charging stations going in the city. It's a great thing, right? We're going to have these that are going to be in some way sponsored on city property. At my day job, we also have devices such as this, and we've run into a problem where these things are actually a hot commodity, and there's never enough of them. But it's not uncommon for someone to park their vehicle at one and then leave to go about their business and preventing other people from using it. I don't have any formal direction at this time, but we may want to be in front of the problem in regards to drafting ordinances that would make this not like a normal parking spot where it's available to charge and then be moved away to be parked.
We, we kind of thought about that a little bit, and part of the thought was, the locations where they're being put in aren't an area that somebody just generally goes to and leaves there, it's not like a shopping mall or next to an apartment building. If they're going to be going to the rec center, generally speaking, they go there for an hour or so while the vehicle's charging, but it is a good idea to maybe, as part of an ordinance, put a parking limit and a parking time on it. I agree with you on that.
I, so what we found at my daytime employer, which is a college campus, the most often users of these things are not the people at the college, but they're people from surrounding businesses who seek these things out. And we've actually had confrontations with people who get frustrated at other people being parked there on a regular basis and that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah.
Just, it's worth noting.
It is, it is, and I think that's a great idea for us to take a look into, by limiting the amount of time a vehicle could stay in one of those spots.
Thank you, sir. We do have an approving on consent, I believe, from Mr. McCullough. Is there any open audience communication for number eight? Any added comments from the audience? We appreciate everybody who's spoken on this item. Thank you, Mr. Rushlow.
Welcome.
Item number nine is a, a proposed amendment to the Livonia Court of Ordinances as amended, and request to remove Council Resolution 283-21 from Committee of the Whole. This comes from Council member, Council member Brandon McCullough, our official representative to the Tree Committee. This would add Sections 015, 045, 055, and amend Sections 020, 040, and 050 to Title 12, Chapter 24, having to do with trees and shrubs, therefore resolving the subject matter item in the committee. This is also known as the Tree Ordinance. Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
The floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Listen, this is, it, it a, a big, big item, at least for a lot of us in this room, even though there's not a lot of people in this room, but we've been working on this, I want to say, for the last couple of years, you probably for the last couple decades, and there's been a lot of discussion that has been, you know, meetings and people coming in, and, you know, some of them get a little heightened and a lot of motions play out, but I, I'm very happy that we've got to this stage. You know, trees contribute, I, I wanted to read just a quick thing. Trees contribute to a community's character and livability, improve air quality, stormwater management, energy savings, and increased aesthetics. Obviously, these storms by DTE have been doing a number on some of our awesome trees around the city, but there's been a lot of work that has went into this. And before I hand it over to Mr. Moore, I do want to just take a brief moment and recognize some people that were integral part. Mr. Moore, huge, I mean, you, you basically helped put this one past the goal line, you've run the meetings for the Tree Committee, you've been a true, basically our expert, subject matter expert on all things trees and forestry, and we appreciate it. So I hope this is a good- So I hope this is a good, happy day for you and staff as well. Erica Flores, part of the team, Tricia. I mean, we had some, a lot of discussions on different trees. I learned a ton. You know, I don't claim to be an amend, in, in the weeds, the subject matter expert, I am not, but I do love sustainability. I love our canopy. And some of the, some of the discussions that we've had, you, you learn a lot. Bill Craig, I know Bill Craig's no longer with the Tree Committee, but I know that this was a vision of his for many, many, many years. And so finally, for this to happen. Jim Beringhaus, Greenleaf Chair, your whole Greenleaf Commission, kudos. This is a big day as well. Jim Crowley, Brent Sabo's back there, Frank Kolinsky, Jen Corey, Julie Noble, Chris Last. If I'm missing someone, I don't want to turn this into the, get the music from the award ceremony.
I'm sorry.
But no, everybody that spent countless hours on this, kudos. And then Lawrence Sobson from the DNR, who came in and kind of gave us an idea. I mean, we were in the weeds, and then we got high level, and then obviously, when you do a tree ordinance, you might have seen in the news that, you know, the, the private property is, is kind of a no-no when it comes to the tree ordinance. And I think we've, we've got to a point where this is a really good, uh, draft that we can build upon with, over the years. Um, I'm not going to go through every single item, but I wanted to touch base on, uh, Section 1A, established policies, regulation, and standards of maintenance in the order to ensure the city of Livonia continues to realize the benefits of an urban forest. And then E, encourage residents to plan and maintain trees on private property consistent to these goals. We use the private property from more of a marketing perspective to promote the growth of trees and our canopy. Also, pairing with that, I wanted to give a quick shout out to Representative Paul Hutske with the $500,000 grant from the state that helped us with the last item to, to obtain our tree inventory that you're working on, and then also, obviously, planting trees to support the canopy. So without further ado, I want to hand it over to Mr. Moore, and congratulations on pushing this past the goal line.
Oh, you too. Thank you. Council, I'm available for questions. This is a public tree ordinance. It is setting us to a higher, the city of Livonia, to a higher standard, um, with hopes that someday, maybe, it might, we might look to private property, but that is not anywhere on the horizon. Uh, this is for us now, and if you have questions, I will try to answer them. It's been ongoing for a while.
Mr. Moore, as an alumni of the Tree Committee, um, I, I remember some, some conversations with you in regards to asking you what Bill Craig meant when he talked to me about this. And I think once I was appointed to council, like eight years ago or whatever it was, the first meeting I took with anybody was Bill Craig telling us how direly we needed this particular ordinance. So I'll just say, you know, kudos to you and everybody involved. I hope Bill Craig is happy with this. I hope he sees it. Um, and just, you know, this, this is a good, it's a good thing for our community, and it's going to go a long way towards keeping us what we are and making us better in the future.
Right.
Mr. Donavich?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Mr. Moore, for your work. Just a clarification, this ordinance will not affect any trees on private property.
Correct. Public trees only.
So whether you are a tree in your front yard that you want to take down, or you are developing a neighborhood and, and there's trees that you want to take down, this ordinance will not affect that.
Correct.
There's one little thing, unless it's obstructing traffic, because we do have trees that do interfere with traffic, and there is a requirement that they be trimmed so that people don't get hurt on the roads. That's the only issue that deals with the private property.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Bernier, and thank you. Uh, I just wanted to get that out there and make sure I kind of touched on that because I think it's a gross overreach of government for government to tell private property owners they can and cannot take down trees. I understand there's permits and, and certain regulations you have to go through, but I know other communities have tried to do that, and rightfully so. It's been challenged in court, and they've had a lot of issues there. But I'm happy to see that the city took that upon themselves to kind of have a balanced ordinance and not do that. So thank you, Mr. Moore, for your work. Appreciate it.
Mr. Morgan?
Uh, yes, I, I actually have a couple of questions. I, I was reading through this, and was this, this a misdemeanor before, you know?
I believe so, but I'd have to defer to Mr. Bernier.
Everything in our ordinance that isn't spelled out as a civil infraction is a, is a misdemeanor. That's the way our ordinances work.
So in other words, if a homeowner has a tree that happens to be on the right-of-way, maybe across their sidewalk or something, and they decide to call a professional company to come out and just trim it up a little bit, that would be considered a misdemeanor?
I'd like to think we use a little bit better discretion than that. I hope the Law Department does in charging, as does, as does, uh, the Forestry Department. We have never had one of those. There's a difference we see between trimming up a tree and naming a tree or cutting down the tree. Uh, but it has always been that way.
Okay. Because it, it just says pruning in here. And there's another question I also wanted to touch base on, as this, DTE comes through and cuts some of those trees that are on, is there, is there a provision in there that, that exempts them?
Well, they're, they're exempted by state law on the cutting of the trees, state and federal law. And the trees that are cut, generally speaking, are on the right-of-way and not on private property. But there is, there is difference. State law and, and federal law with the utilities would preempt what we do.
Okay.
Mr. McCullough?
Now, with this, just for point of information, is this a first read, or is this an approving?
No, first read would be at the regular meeting.
At the regular? I'd be happy to offer an approving for regular.
Mr. Chair.
Vice President Toy.
Thank you. Um, it's been a long time coming. I think that's why Mr. Williams has that beard, um, because, you know, it has been many years. So hats off to you, but also hats off to Councilman McCullough. He worked very hard, um, and I know, you know, he, he just, you know, focused on this so much that he drove everybody crazy in his family, and, um, I'm teasing, but, um, in all seriousness...
It takes a good, we got a good team.
Yeah, in all seriousness, it takes a team. I get it. But, um, also it takes a leader, and he certainly stepped up to the cause. So as well as yourself and others, don't get me wrong, but I do want to congratulate him because, um, he didn't congratulate himself. So somebody needed to.
At some point, he was just rambling, "But the trees are my friends."
I hate you.
You know, and we almost took him somewhere for help.
We've had some exciting meetings, I can tell you that.
Thank you all. We have, uh, an approving, uh, which will carry over to the regular meeting. I'm going to open up the floor to the audience in regards to this matter. Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Hi, Brent Sabo, 14587 Blue Skies Street. Although I disagree with certain aspects of the city's tree management, the adoption of these sections of the ordinance would be a victory for the city and something that we should celebrate.
That's right. Oh, good.
Uh, I spoke with Mr. Sobson today from the DNR, and he's the urban forester who helped advise us in the Tree Committee on this ordinance. And mentioned to him that you guys would be reviewing this tonight, and he wants me to keep him posted on if the city does adopt this, because if Livonia does adopt this ordinance change, then he will be using Livonia as an example to other cities, and that's something that we should be really proud of.
Absolutely.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You worked hard.
Is there any other audience comment on this matter?
You know what, uh, Mr. President, before he leaves the podium, this guy worked real hard on the tree stuff, too. Um, and, uh, he should, he should be commended by the city and this council. Thank you for all your work, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. That concludes our agenda for this evening.